Yeah, go ahead. Red is on, yes.
Yes.
Oh, good.
I know.
Oh. Okay. Thank you.
I'll get a comfy chair for you.
One more thing?
I never have.
Hot lock thing.
That's right.
And I think the dates just got changed though. I don't know. Shade, I don't know what's going on with it though. But just call her and ask her and that sort of thing.
Okay.
And that's not a private matter, it's open to public so it's much easier.
Look at that one thing. I never did get that key to make a copy.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
All right, good evening, everybody. I'm glad you could come by. Here we are for the fourth Tuesday. Everybody seems to be happy. So let's just get right to it. We are called to order and all the board members are here, which is great. This is, I think, six meetings in a row where all board members have been here. So that's super. That's good.
No, it's the consent calendar.
All right, we have two transmittals here. Transmittal labeled A1, transmittal 1-15B for district bills $1,506.55 for landscaping, April Warner, Home Depot, and Steve Roger. Should we go right to a vote? All those in favor of approving the payment of the bills listed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so that passes. Going to A2, transmittal 1-15C, and the amount of $2,580.66. This is for Janne Keen, SCE, the Water District, AT&amp;T, and Waste Management. And this bill, the Water District, we've got a $1,627.57 bill, which is high. Is that from the leak problem that...
Yeah, and that was supposed to be... Did somebody talk to the...
Yeah, I talked to IRWD and as soon as the next bill comes in, we show we fixed it, then that's how it's gonna work.
And they credit us.
Yeah, then they credit us. So I wait for the next bill.
All of them?
Yeah, whatever the...
They usually put it back to you what your average was for them. Your averages.
Okay. So that's got a very large portion of it is a bill from a leak that was fixed. Thank you, Steve, for being right on that and getting to that, and Phil also.
He was out in the...
All those in favor of approving this transmittal, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes as well. And the next item is the minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? So we can go to a consent vote on that. Does anyone have any corrections to the minute before we do that? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes. That is the consent calendar and we go on to the treasurer's report.
Treasurer's report. The financial statements for February 2015 were distributed to the board members on Saturday, March 21st, 2015. The following are highlights of those statements. SMRPD profit and loss statement. Income was relatively low at $706 from miscellaneous taxes and rental fees. Normal operating expenses of $5,500 for the month. Nothing extraordinary to report. As a result, SMRPD shows an operating loss of $4,800 in February and nearly $29,000 for the fiscal year-to-date, that's July to June. SMRPD balance sheet, our cash position is down nearly $5,000 from last month as we covered our February net loss. Just make this sound, of course, and it's not one of the baddest sounds. The current loan balance to SCC remains unchanged from December at $126,000. SCC profit and loss statement. February tuition is at more than $6,000, the highest it's been since November of 2013. However, it is not yet high enough to cover expenses of nearly $9,400 without donation income. Thanks to Rick Schultz's generous donation, along with many others, February shows a net profit for the first time in months, nearly $5,000. Which is great. Overall, for the current fiscal year, SCC is operating at a year-to-date loss of $25,500. SCC balance sheet highlights SCC operating cash is more than $3,000, a notable improvement over the last several months. I see that says several moths on this. Total cash position at the end of February is $12,600, which includes $9,000 in deferred grant revenue from the Rooster Club. That's the end of the report.
Thanks, Phil. Let's go on then to the other district... Oh, we need to approve the February financials.
And you all have all seen the financials for February? There they are.
Yes, we have.
And here's a copy if anybody wants to look. So I make a motion to approve the February financials?
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So those are approved. And thank you, Phil, for doing such a good job on getting those in order. They are really helpful. And it's also nice to see that we're starting to make some improvement, I think, on how we're doing in certain departments, especially with the children's center. That is really hard news to see that we've got more than double the tuition collected from late last fall. So that's real progress and good to see.
It also gives us a lot of, you know, push forward into the sort of cook-off. So we're gonna be here.
Taking on...
Knowing is everything.
And thank you, Frances, for all the work you're doing.
Everybody.
There's a lot of direction...
Thank you all. You can't span.
And focus. It's really good to see those members. All right, so on to other district business. The first item listed, action A, is discussion and possible vote on the California Special Districts Association for $349. I'm not sure who asked for that to be on the agenda.
Phil. I think, yeah, you know, we... The California Special Districts Association is kind of helpful and I think we've all been getting the emails and a lot of it doesn't apply to us, but there are some good things that come through there, some alerts and stuff, like with this whole law that came through that was, you know, helpful to find out what other people were saying and doing about it. And so we have a past due bill, they're billing us for our renewal and I don't know. I don't know if you guys think it's worthwhile or not, but we sort of, we haven't really addressed it, so I think we want to talk about it and see if you guys think, from what you've seen from the emails and other information, if you think it's worthwhile or not. I'm a little divided on it. I think past boards have found it very useful for alerts and whatnot. I've sort of, I was against the idea actually at the beginning because I thought it was too much money, $350, but by the same token, you know, maybe it's worthwhile to have and keep it in the loop.
All right, other, I know Steve wanted to talk, but let's just have director comments first on this. Do we have opinions about whether this has been helpful? We do get a lot of emails. Sometimes 15 emails are there when you log on in the day and I don't know who's reading them, but if people are reading them and find them helpful to keep informed, I think it's good to bring that out.
I know, I've found two of them pertinent information. I know if you ever need an answer, you can put it out there. Is it something I think you can't just get off the internet for free? You possibly could. Haven't tried it. Would we have to set up somebody as a liaison for maybe organizing or keeping track of what the meetings are? We gotta show up to, you know, they have these...
I don't think so.
No, unless somebody goes, "Oh gee, I really want to go to this event because I think it'd help the district out and we could talk about going," but I don't think we're really required to do anything.
My only other point is usually they're not going to be cleaning up their e-blast list, so even if you don't join, I still think we're gonna get the emails.
Strange is I just started getting them when this new board began getting them. I didn't get them for the last two years. I thought that was strange.
Yeah.
Yeah, this whole new email thing where everybody's talking back and forth, it's new.
Steve, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to note that we, that's out of that magazine right there that I just handed you, gentlemen, that's part of their... And they, that's where we found our last, the last board found our certified tax, CBA, and it was at a very good price.
And the auditor?
The auditor, yeah.
And I had Phil get his information and give it to somebody else. I'll throw that whole email out.
And it was, he was a lot cheaper than, from what I understand, from what they said. I don't know exactly how much, but I heard that it was a lot cheaper than...
Yeah, it's good.
They were happy because they said we saved the money, the $350 just to...
I've never seen this before. What usually happens to these? This is every two months it comes out?
Yeah, and it comes here to the, you're in a, I'll drop it off on the table for you guys when the meeting's.
Okay.
Is it a monthly?
I think it's a monthly.
Every other month. And I mean, I'll make a comment that I do see a lot of those emails. I tend not to read them. If it's something, I, we'll have Betsy Martin's new retainer agreement coming up down the line, but I've found her to be very responsive and very efficient so far in terms of answering questions and much more focused than reading a bunch of emails about people wondering, "Does anybody have a form out there?" Whatever, so, but that's not to say there isn't value to it. I just personally haven't been using it myself. But any other comments about whether we should splurge for $349?
Bob, what did you think about CSDA? Was it worthwhile having it?
I think they do good work on behalf of the special districts. They are fairly effective with the legislature, you know, with supporting this membership for that reason. They are pretty good about answering the questions when you go.
And I find what you do when you get the email is someone's gonna throw out a question that goes to everybody. Who out there, usually starts with who out there knows about this or that? If it's something that you're not attuned to, you just read that and go, "Okay." Then whenever there's a response, you don't have to look at it because that'll be the subject matter. But if it's a subject matter you like, you just wait for that response and the subject matter and then you can read something that might be in the body of the email. But then again, I don't think we're gonna be taken off of the email list. But that's, you know, that's, could be, could not be.
Bob, were they, were they active during that whole grand jury investigation into special districts?
I'm sure by that time I was kind of disengaging.
Okay, but we've...
His stock was, his stock was involved with that.
We've been subscribers to this and supporters of it for years, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Do we want to take this to a vote? Ready? All those in favor of...
Do I have to make a move first?
Oh, we do have to have a motion. All right, well, I'm still on the consent calendar.
Yeah, I wasn't...
Does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make, I make a motion that we renew our membership in CSDA.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that does pass.
We'll see if it doesn't.
The next item is discussion and possible vote on sponsorship or donation to Trails For All for the 19th Annual Intercoastal Cleanup Event.
I will, I'm going to recuse myself.
You're a member, are you still a member of the Board of Trails For All?
I am not, I am no longer a member of Trails For All's board, but I am the site captain for the event and because I'm a past CEO of Trails For All, I thought I will best, I recuse myself. So I will do that. You guys can vote.
Technically, he doesn't have to, but he's...
Enjoy the sunset, it's pretty colorful up there. All right, this is something that, as I understand it, we have supported a number of years and I think the range of support has maybe typically been between anywhere from $100 to $600 or more. And one year, I think we sprang for the dumpsters, which was quite a bit more, maybe $1,500. So they've got some major sponsors that cover a lot of it, but my understanding is that there's about a $10,000 shortfall and obviously this is, this is well-supported in our community. I've gotten to meet a number of people in the community out on our roads cleaning up trash. It's a wonderful thing to do and it's great to see that a lot of people in Orange County are doing it on that day to clean up our roadways and also our waterways. So that's my introduction on this. Do we have any comments?
I think it's a really valuable event and our organization has partnered with it, the Canyon Line Conservation Fund, and sent volunteers out. I was disappointed that the SMRPD did not pay attention to his request for sponsorship last year and it went by the wayside. And SMRPD was not involved and I would like to see that continue.
All right. Any other comments?
I would have a question. I mean, obviously if we have to figure out a dollar amount, what does sponsorship entail? I mean, do we get to supply them a logo and get printed up on a banner whenever they're cleaning up? Do we get mentioned as a great little district that's helping with this?
There are t-shirts, but I don't remember...
I think that you have to give a fair amount and the guy who would know that is out there, but I, for instance, there's somebody who is giving $5,000 or...
Is that Rick Schultz?
There's sponsorship levels. It starts at $750, it goes up to $15,000. It should have been in your board packet. I just want all of you to know that the board packets are online, so you can look at all of the stuff that we have on our website.
All right, so you have, to be a bronze sponsor, that's the starting level, that's $750. And you can be on...
Event flyers?
Flyers and brochures and t-shirts, et cetera. But, so the question is, what kind of donation, if any, do we want to make?
I suggest $250. I mean, they ask for, I think that in general, they usually ask for like $100 minimum and this isn't, this isn't an event that's going to get a lot of visibility for SMRPD or anything like that, but it is an important event to our canyons and every little bit helps. But he gets a huge amount of corporate support for this and other support too. So I, my suggestion is $250.
It sounds proportionate to what we have and from what a corporation has. And I don't, I wouldn't think, being on an event flyer and it's probably just a single line text, you can't like take up some space without logo or anything.
Well, given that we are operating considerably in the red, I think it makes sense to probably go at the $250 level. It shows that we do support it and we do get good community involvement in this, which is nice to see.
Yeah.
Is $250 specified as a level of some sort or that's just, okay, it starts at the bronze?
It's a don't use.
$750 is...
Right.
If anybody wants to match anything, we put in.
Well, it's a good one. It's great to actually go out there and meet your neighbors and clean up the street. The first time I did it with Phil, the very next day, a truck roared down the highway and left hundreds of rolls of toilet paper everywhere. But, you know, you just keep working at it, so.
Got TP.
All right, I move that we let SMRPD sponsor the Trails For All Intercoastal Canyon Cleanup or whatever it's called for $250.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes.
Is there a date on that, a date on that flyer?
Yeah.
You want to get Phil?
September 19th.
So, oh, that's right. Yes.
September 15th. And the deadline's July 31st, so we can post it that sec. Let's tell Phil we didn't sponsor it.
No.
Oh, all right, all right.
We're sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
You voted, you're barking up the wrong tree, we didn't give you any.
It's all right, it's all right. We'll clean up anyway, we'll do whatever it takes, no problem. Oh, okay, so we're on to the 100C MOU.
Correct.
Okay, this is, this whole thing came up because there was a gentleman in the canyon that needed to do some public service, court-ordered public service and looking to do it here in the canyon, which is nice, why not? He's a canyon person. So in order to have our agency be eligible to receive court-ordered referrals for volunteer work, we need to join 100C and fill out a memorandum of understanding. And as part of that memorandum of understanding, we need a policy and rules for the volunteer. And I think you guys might have a copy of this.
Here, I made copies too.
I've got copies too. So...
No, it's this, it's different. He just did this one today.
Yay. Thank you, Chad.
Lower level.
Yeah, it's good, thank you. So I have a memorandum of understanding here. It's pretty straightforward stuff. They're asking for our mission statement, our budget size, you know, what type of agency we are. Obviously, we have lots of things that can be done around here with some extra volunteer help, so I thought it sounded like a good idea. So it's before the board to join 100C. Joining 100C costs no money. And 100C, of course, I don't know if you guys are familiar with 100C, is a wonderful nonprofit organization. It's becoming larger and larger over the years. It's a channel for nonprofits and charitable gift-giving. They also have a huge database of grants and donors and they're a very fine top-quality organization and they're devoted to Orange County charitable organizations and giving.
Weren't they some of the first responders to our mud victims? Wasn't 100C the first, one of the first groups to get called and come out here?
It could be, it could be.
That was that big group that...
At Connie Carter's after the flood.
Could be, could be.
I remember 100C people showing up.
They've kind of, they've gotten to be kind of the organization in Orange County, one stop.
Now, as, if I could ask a question too about this, these are court referrals, so, and is it correct that typically the kind of help we'd be getting would be somebody who's going to do some of our maintenance or repair work or something like that, working with Steve? Is that how this is contemplated and do we have a choice of whether we take someone or not, you know?
Yeah, we have a choice of whether we take them or not and we have a choice of asking them or not. And, you know, if the person that's been ordered by the court to do volunteer work requests us, which is basically how this sort of thing happened, you know, that we can, we can say, "No, we wanted to," but, you know, that would be up to us and we might want to vote on that or, I don't, I don't know if we want to do that. I'm not expecting we'll be getting too many people because it's a little bit out of the way. I expect we'll probably be getting, if we get anybody, it'll be like the person we have right now who's a canyon person and wanted to help out in the canyon.
I have a question. What violations are they usually, have they committed? I mean, we wouldn't want someone who's a rapist. We wouldn't want, you know, and this is what I, I mean, I'm very serious. And the reason I say this is we used to stay at, you know, hang out in front of the store and we'd have busloads of people driving up with the sheriffs and they were on a cleanup crew. And they would come up and all of a sudden they're getting drinks out of the store and you hear them talking, going, "Wow, I never knew this place was here." Now, I'm not saying it was directly related to that, but we'd get some sort of senior characters coming and starting to come out here afterwards. We had a guy living in the courts and it started causing trouble, but, you know, the guys out here could handle it. I think he pulled a knife and he got hit in the head with bottles.
The canyon way.
And so...
He said, "Canyon justice."
But, and then we got rid of him because he broke his, I think he broke his collarbone and he called himself and turned himself in and they came and got him and they took him to fit. But are they just drunk drivers or are they, do we have a choice?
Yeah, I had, I had stipulated that we did not want violent offenders and other than that, I didn't say anything.
That's on this application?
Well, I was looking right here in the application, it would, I didn't see where they had it on here, but maybe it was something in the email. But here again, we could say, well, what are the, what are this, what are this person? If they request, first off, I, the board could, would only request somebody, it's like, let's say we wanted to be more active in this. If someone requested us, we could say, "Okay, tell us about your situation," you know?
Okay, but that, we can, we do have that right.
That's especially if they're out of the canyon.
We do have that right.
Right, yeah.
With no privacy.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. No, we could say, you know, "Tell us about," you know? We, in fact, we have the option of interviewing them before we even use them now because this particular person that's interested here is a canyon person.
And I just want to say that, you know, it's not, it's no guarantee that everybody's going to be a construction type of worker either.
Oh, yeah.
There are people who get referred who could do, because we've had other people do movie nights and things like that, who had court-mandated types of activities.
Paris Hilton got to do makeup tips.
Okay, there you go.
We could use that in the canyon.
When, when I ran a nonprofit in Norwalk in Orange County, we would occasionally have people come in and they were usually great, you know? They were on their best behavior and they usually worked pretty hard. So, you know, my personal experience with court-ordered referrals has been pretty good. I haven't had a situation.
So if we decide to do this, are you as the facilities committee guy going to be doing the intake?
I, yes.
He's on here as a primary contractor.
Yeah, I have John Olson.
And you're secondary.
Yeah, your personal address.
Things get out of hand.
Yeah, I just figured, you know, as the, I put, what I put on our policies and procedures would be the designated board director or staff member. So I was thinking, well, that would be a board member or if we wanted to say, "Steve, you know, talk to this guy that's over out of Shady Brook and find out if he's the person we want." So it would be, we have basic, we're in the catbird seat on the whole thing. I mean, we could, we could make any kind of policies about what, how we want them to be and what, how we want them to behave and whatnot. And the policy, the rules and regs I have for them here, these are very simple, these are kind of distilled down from other peoples, but there are just seven things on here, things like no cell phones, you know? No socializing or fraternizing during work hours, but, you know, no gang apparel, this kind of stuff. And that's kind of your standard, your standard rules for people that may want to come in. But they are expected to be, you know, seriously addressed and work and if they aren't, then just say goodbye.
Steve, do you have any comments?
I think the people that you're gonna, yeah, are gonna be people that really are happy that they're not sitting in jail and they're gonna do a good job for you. I mean, they'd much rather be out in the open and helping something out than sitting behind bars and worrying about what could happen to them there, so I think, I think it's probably a good idea.
And I'm, I was thinking...
You know, you just keep working at it, so.
Got TP.
All right, I move that we let SMRPD sponsor the Trails for All Intercolt Canyon Cleanup for whatever it's called, for $250.
I'll second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that passes.
Is there a date on that, uh, Denny on that wire?
Yeah.
You wanna get Phil?
September 19th.
So, oh, that's right. Yes.
September 19th, 2015. And the deadline's July 31st, so we can. Post it back there. Let's tell Phil we didn't sponsor it.
Situation.
Oh, all right, all right.
We're sorry.
We're glad.
No, I'm sorry.
You voted, you're barking up the wrong tree, we didn't give you any.
It's all right, it's all right. We'll clean up anyway, we'll do whatever it takes, no problem. Oh, okay, so we're on to the 101 MOU.
Correct.
Okay, this is, um, this whole thing came up because there was a gentleman in the canyon that needed to do some public service, court-ordered public service, and looking to do it here in the canyon, which is nice, why not, he's a canyon person. So, in order to have our agency be eligible to receive court-ordered referrals for volunteer work, we need to join 101 and fill out a memorandum of understanding. And as part of that memorandum of understanding, we need a, uh, a policy and rules for the, uh, volunteer. And I think you guys might have a copy of this.
Here, I made copies too.
I've got copies too. So.
No, it's this, it's different, he just did this one today.
Yay.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Lower level.
Yeah, it's good, thank you. So, I have a memorandum of understanding here, it's pretty straightforward stuff. They're asking for our mission statement, our budget size, you know, what type of agency we are. Obviously, we, we have lots of things that can be done around here with some extra volunteer help, so, uh, I thought it'd sound like a good idea. So it's before the board to join 101. Joining 101 costs no money. And 101, of course, I don't know if you guys are familiar with 101, is a wonderful, uh, nonprofit organization. It's becoming larger and larger over the years. It's a channel for nonprofits and charitable gift-giving. They also have a huge database of grants and donors. And they're a very fine, top-quality organization, and they're devoted to Orange County charitable organizations and giving.
Weren't they some of the first responders to our mud victims? Wasn't 101 the first, one of the first groups to get called and come out here?
It could be, it could be.
That was that big group that, Connie Carter's after the flood.
Could be, could be.
I remember 101 people showing up.
They've, they've kind of, they've gotten to be kind of the organization in Orange County, one stop. So.
Now, as, if I could ask a question too about this. These are court referrals, so, um, and is it correct that typically the kind of help we'd be getting would be somebody who's going to do some of our maintenance or repair work or something like that, working with Steve, is, is that how this is contemplated? And do we have a choice of whether we take someone or not, you know?
Yeah, we have a choice of whether we take them or not, and we have a choice of asking them or not. And, you know, if the person that's been ordered by the court to do volunteer work requests us, which is basically how this sort of thing happened, uh, you know, that we can, we can say no, we wanted to. But, you know, that would be up to us, and we might wanna vote on that, or, I don't, I don't know if we wanna do that. I'm not expecting we'll be getting too many people because it's a little bit out of the way. I expect we'll probably be getting, if we get anybody, it'll be like the person we have right now, who's a canyon person and wanted to help out in the canyon.
I have a question. What violations are they usually, have they committed? I mean, we wouldn't want someone who's a rapist. We wouldn't want, you know, and this is what I, I mean, I'm very serious. And the reason I say this is we used to stay at, you know, hang out in front of the store, and we'd have busloads of people driving up with the sheriffs, and they were on a cleanup crew. And they would come up and all of a sudden they're getting drinks out of the store, and you hear them talking, going, wow, I never knew this place was here. Now, I'm not saying it was directly related to that, but we'd get some sort of senior characters coming and starting to come out here afterwards. We had a guy living in the courts. And it started causing trouble, but, you know, the guys out here could handle it. I think he pulled a knife and he got hit in the head with bottles.
The canyon way.
He said, "Candy justice."
And then we got rid of him because he broke his, I think he broke his collarbone, and he called himself and turned himself in, and they came and got him and they took him to fit. But are they just drunk drivers, or are they, do we have a choice?
Yeah, I had, I had stipulated that we did not want violent offenders. And other than that, I didn't say anything.
That's on this application?
Well, I was looking right here in the application, it would, I didn't see where they had it on here, but maybe it was something in the email. But here again, we could say, well, what are the, what are this, what are this person? If they request, first off, I, the board could, would only request somebody, it's like, let's say we wanted to, to be more active in this. If someone requested us, we could say, okay, tell us about your situation, you know?
Okay, but that, we can, we do have that right.
That's especially if they're out of the canyon.
We do have that right.
Right, yeah.
There's no privacy.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, no, we could say, you know, tell us about, you know, we, in fact, we have the option of interviewing them before we even use them. Now, because this particular person that's interested here is a canyon person.
And I, I just wanna say that, you know, it's not, it's no guarantee that everybody's gonna be a construction-type of worker either.
Oh, yeah.
There are people who get referred who could do, because we've had other people do movie nights and things like that, who had court-mandated types of activities.
Paris Hilton got to do makeup tips.
Okay, there you go.
Yeah, we could use that in the canyon.
When, when I ran a nonprofit in Norwalk in Orange County, we would occasionally have people come in, and they were usually great, you know, they were on their best behavior, and they usually worked pretty hard. Uh, so, you know, my personal experience with court-ordered referrals has been pretty good. I haven't had a situation.
So, if, if we decide to do this, are you as the facilities committee guy gonna be doing the intake?
I, yes.
He's on here as the primary contact.
Yeah, I have John Olson.
And you're secondary.
Yeah, your personal address.
Things get out of hand.
Yeah, I, I just figured, you know, as the facility, I put, what I put on our policies and procedures would be the designated board director or staff member. So I was thinking, well, that would be a board member, or if we wanted to say, Steve, you know, talk to this guy that's over out of Shady Brook and find out if he's the person we want. So it would be, we have basic, we're in the catbird seat on the whole thing. I mean, we could, we could make any kind of policies about what, how we want them to be, what, how we want them to behave and whatnot. And the policy, the, the rules and regs I have for them here, these are very simple, these are kind of distilled down from other peoples, but they're just seven things on here, things like no cell phones, you know, no socializing or fraternizing during work hours. But, you know, no gang apparel, this kind of stuff. And that's kind of your standard, your standard rules for people that may want to come in. But they are expected to be, you know, seriously addressed and work. And if they aren't, then you just say goodbye.
Steve, do you have any comments?
Uh, I think the people that you're gonna, yeah, are gonna be people that really are happy that they're not sitting in jail. And they're gonna do a good job for you. I mean, they'd much rather be out in the open and helping something out than sitting behind bars and worrying about what could happen to them there, so. I think, I think it's probably a good idea.
And I'm, I was thinking really primarily of community, you know, canyon people.
Right.
You guys can, you guys can make the decision too, it sounds like, you know, you pretty much can mold the whole thing to what you want, so.
We have a lot of things that need to be repaired and brought up to date, so we can certainly use the help.
I would think obviously the children's center maintenance would be out of the question.
No, that can't handle them.
No. All right, so I move that we approve, um, membership in 101, signing of the MOU, and adopting of the addition to district policy, and the court-referred volunteer rules and policies. So, Beth, did you get all that down? So it's approving the membership in 101, signing the MOU for participation in the court-appointed volunteer program. Approving a district policy for the court-ordered program. And approving volunteer rules and policies. How's that?
That's thorough.
No second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I might say the membership in 101 might have some secondary benefits to us too, you know, connections and whatnot.
Keep us posted. So, next item is sponsor the Easter egg hunt at Silverado Easter breakfast for a budget of $350. Who's, uh, this is your item?
That's my item. Originally, it was being, it's, it's been held by the Silverado firefighters that put on the breakfast, and then they did a main volunteers to fill the Easter eggs, get the stuff, fill the eggs, set it all up, run the Easter egg hunt, and they get reimbursed on the proceeds later. When two of those volunteers stepped down, they handed it over to the Silverado Children's Center, and the Children's Center couldn't really handle it, you know, with the workload of it, so I took it. And then my husband became a fireman, so I was happy to continue that. But I just thought to get it off of their plate because it's not really what they do, the firemen, they set up the breakfast and run the breakfast. So it's kind of separate. I just thought it might be something fun for the SMRPD to be sponsoring from now on. Then it wouldn't come from the proceeds anymore, and they could use the proceeds for equipment.
What does, what does the $350 go to?
Purchase of the actual little plastic Easter eggs and the fillers for it. There's about 100 kits at least now that come to our Easter egg hunt on Easter, given weather, you know, conditions and stuff like that, but we have three Easter egg hunts, three different age levels, and it's been growing, so.
Out there, you have three Easter egg hunts?
Three Easter egg hunts, one for the little ones, one for like four to seven, and then eight years old and up. And it gets really crowded. So it's, it's a great, it's a great community event, and people come from all over Orange County to an hour of breakfast here. It's a family get-together for a lot of families that don't live in the canyons.
Could you break down the 350, like just off the top of your head, budget?
$3.50 per hundred for each kid.
That's not very much.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's baskets, eggs, and candy.
Yeah.
No, we ask them to bring their baskets, but there is, I, I order baskets about every two years, and we use them up, so.
Do they get prizes?
They, um, there's a little, there's, there's filler in the eggs, candy and toys, and they get to have as many as they can collect. And then there is a golden egg in each age group, Easter egg hunt. And then there are three baskets that I usually put together, and the winner of the golden egg goes to the front booth, turns it in, and gets an Easter basket.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's all included, it's all included in the three kids.
Well, Wendy?
That sounds like a lot of money, though. I mean, how much, really Shay, what are you, I know that you've put out year after year, but.
I'm, I'm, I'm over that out of my own pocket. So I'm doing it anyway because I really like to have lots of eggs.
Yeah, it just seems like the community would, could, could just, you know.
You could ask for some donations, too.
Yeah, I think that that's a.
Do we, are there any donations? This is a free event, right? So kids come.
Well, the parent, the people that, it's a, the Easter egg hunt is free. The people that are coming to the breakfast are paying $6 for adults and $4 for children to the firefighters.
Right, which helps support them.
If the SMRPD didn't, chose not to be the managers of that, then it would continue under the firefighters, and it would be paid for out of their proceeds. Their proceeds are pretty low, that's the only thing.
It is a recreational event, which is great for us to actually bring about a recreational event and support it. I think if you've been to Newport Beach and seen their new city hall, there's quite a controversy about the rabbits that they have in sculptures that sit in circles, rabbit circles. And the amount of money they spent, I think it was like $100,000 or even more for these rabbits. So we're talking $350 for eggs that kids can bring home, so.
350 would be.
A hundred kids, I didn't know it was that many kids, so.
There's a lot of kids.
Yeah, if it's a hundred kids.
And I videotaped it, so you can kind of, you can actually count the kids from last year. And it's close to 100. The, the, the two, the option would be, the 350 is complete management and payout to the Easter egg hunt. But if it, if we chose not to do that, then it would be, then I would, then it could be a donation toward it, you know? But it would, then it would still continue to be under the fire, so.
I just mentioned in the interest of fairness that I contacted Bruce Newell and Paul LaBarre, and said, "So, do you guys want me to put in something for the Majeska firefighters?" And they said, "No," they said, "They're good to go, they're independent, and, you know, the Majeskaites, they're all, they all think they're better than us." Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I live in Majeska, oh, never mind.
So you must be speaking the truth.
But that is different, they, they're actually waiting on you, and they're, it's more of a sit-down.
It's more of an intimate breakfast than what we're doing here.
Ours is master scary.
Ours is like, put the word out, get as many people as possible.
Majeska's sort of people wanna be, have their food brought to them.
I move that we sponsor the Easter egg hunt for $350.
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I'll, I'll probably recuse, just because I, my husband's a fireman, and I've been running this Easter egg hunt for the last few years, so.
You wanna step out of the room for five seconds while we complete the vote?
Sure, 'cause I gotta party.
All right. Again, taking the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? You can come back.
Now, now, Beth, I did read on that California special districts thing, then maybe Phil, you and Kevin read that for all these action items, you're supposed to record what each board member votes.
Unless everybody says aye.
Unless it's unanimous.
Yeah, then you don't have, if anyone says.
What's the word when you leave? What's the word that I put?
Recuse.
Recuse.
The last minute.
It's probably from last. Recusing. All right.
So, on that last item then, is it, are we gonna, we, is it gonna be advertised as a recreational event, the Easter egg hunt? How are we gonna put the word out for the 350 bucks?
Well, I think we'll have a vote.
It's on a website.
I'll post it on Facebook, on our SMRPD Facebook page.
And we should modify it on the website where they talk about the Easter breakfast, we should add Easter egg hunt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we could, yeah, we could shout out.
And, and, you know, use the recreational program, you know, do something so it's saying that it's a SMRPD.
Sponsored event.
Program, I mean, but it's almost like we're using that statement over and over again, and so it's just going over people's heads, you know, try to say, you know, the, I don't know, I'm just.
Okay. All right, Kevin, you got more on that?
Self-promotion.
Is the.
Yeah, there you go.
They all know we're good eggs.
The thing is, now it's a, that's an SMRPD Easter egg hunt, and what about people that don't go to the breakfast? Or is it open to all kids? Is it things that, that they charge when they walk through the gate to the breakfast? So it's, it's limiting the community as far as recreation funds to not be able to go to that. And again, I don't know if people are gonna come down without having breakfast.
It's more, more like supporting our local fire department, so they don't have to spend the money for the Easter eggs.
We're, we're. I understand that, I'm just saying they're, they're adding more questions in my mind.
Shay, come back.
We have a question.
We need your, we need your. We're still discussing expertise.
It's already passed.
But I think that you're not being charged to come, yeah.
Shay, what is it?
They're charged, you get charged, then you get your place, so.
No, I get that.
They pay for breakfast, they don't pay to participate in the egg hunt.
No, but they have to pay to participate, okay.
Do they have to buy breakfast to be in the egg hunt?
No, no.
Okay, so it's a community event?
It's a community event.
Let's have all the kids that we can have.
Do you know what time the Easter egg hunt's at?
9:30.
So then the SMRPD can even advertise the, the Easter egg hunt separate than the, than the.
Yeah, yeah.
Than the breakfast. I mean, ultimately, we all wanna buy breakfast and support the firemen, I'm not, I'm just saying it might be questions like, oh, do, you know, do I have to buy breakfast to put my kid in the Easter egg hunt, and those type of things? That's why.
No, no, never, never has.
Okay.
But it sounds like a great event, and I'm glad we're doing it.
It was a consideration, because it's, it's grown and become kind of expensive, but it has not. It's, it's never been chargeable, and I don't want it to.
You really should put out master donations, I'm sure you'll get lots of stuff.
We even went as far as collecting the, the leftover eggs, you know, people that, some of the families go in, they get all the prizes out of the eggs, and then we have a recycle bin, and we reuse those. So we're trying really hard to, to keep the cost down, even though it's growing. And, um, I get lots of jewelry from Wendy.
So, any chance we will have a bunny hopping around? An Easter bunny? Because I, everyone's probably seen one of these.
There's a bunny costume, but I'm not wearing it.
You're not gonna do that. Well, not around kids anyway.
No, it's been worn by these teenage boys, and it's not been washed, and I'm not wearing it.
Well, you can't dress like that around kids, yeah.
All right, let's go to the next item, which.
Thank you.
Which is, um, the approval of new retainer agreement with Board Counsel Elizabeth Martin, which is a part of your board package. Elizabeth Martin has been our counsel for many, many years, and the reason that we have a new agreement is she has moved to a new firm, Cota Cole. So it's the same person we're gonna be dealing with that we've been dealing with for many years. And, um, she sent me this, and actually offered to lower her rate. And it's very much, I think, a goodwill gesture on her part to offer her services at $150 an hour for her time, which I regard as a really very kind gesture in terms of what you might otherwise be paying. We were paying 200, which was still a very, very reasonable rate. As an attorney practicing in Orange County, that, these are rates that are very, very fair to us. So it's a, to me, I've looked at the agreement, we changed a few items, but it's a pretty standard retainer agreement. It does not obligate us to use her, it does not forbid us from using someone else in addition to her or replacing her. It's simply she's gone to a new firm, and it is not legal to, um, give services to a client without a signed retainer agreement, so that's why we're doing this, so. Anyway, that's the deal, and if you have any questions or concerns, I can try to answer them. But it's, I think it's rather pro forma, so.
There's no exclusivity in that, then we could use another attorney to.
No, there is none, and that's expressly stated, and that's also the law. You're not obligated to continue with your attorney if at any time you decide you wanna move. You have that right under California law, so it's, it's simply, this is just a better deal for us. So can we go to, I'll move that, that we accept this retainer agreement and move forward with Elizabeth Martin as our retainer, or as our retained attorney under this agreement. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those, so this passes. All right, the next item is item F, discussion and possible approval of new SMRPD policy on purchasing goods and services. And this is also part of the package, or should have been, part of the.
Yes.
Let's see if I can find my section, this one.
Oh, no, it's on your agenda, it's right here.
Okay. I had a little blurb though that I prepared.
You did.
Oh, here it is, I got it. All right, there's a, this is an outgrowth of our last meeting where there was discussion about, um, a new law that applies to public works. And, um, when does that require bidding, if it does at all? And what does it require us to do to comply with that new law? I have talked with our counsel about this, and we basically have two different sets of laws that apply here. We have a public contracts code which has been around for a long time. And that provides that whether it's construction work or purchase of material and supplies, if it's gonna cost more than $25,000, then you are required by law to have competitive bidding with a published advertisement inviting bids. And, um, and that has been around for a long time. That has not been changed, that's under Public Contract Code 2815, uh, and 2.5 of that statute. So that's one set of law. That's the part that says if you're a public agency like we are, and you have, are going to purchase something, or you're going to do improvement work on your, you know, build a building, or, you know, tear up your parking lot, put a new one in, what have you, and it's gonna cost more than $25,000, then you have to do public bidding. There's nothing in it about informal bidding or anything like that. Our purchasing policy that goes back many years provided that if we were going to do some kind of work that exceeded $1,500, there would be informal bidding, but it doesn't define what that means. And that's a very low number now. Two requires something that maybe the kind of thing, every month, we're getting things like sprinkler repairs or leaks in our plumbing, what have you, so. And it, and it required that the amount was gonna be more than $15,000, you have to do it by formal bid, which is lower than the Public Contract Code provides for. So that's one set of law, and that's just about bidding. The other set of law is this law that, as I understand it, is designed to protect union, uh, unions, and that's what it's all about. And it used to be that the unions would actually go out and try to find agencies that were not paying prevailing union wage, and they do that by setting up shield organizations and making Freedom of Information Act requests, et cetera, et cetera. The law was changed last year to have a self-reporting aspect to it. So if there is a public work by an agency such as ourselves, which would be either, you know, construction of something, or a big repair of something or whatever, and it exceeds $1,000, then you have to use a registered contractor, registered with the state. And you have to pay, or tell them that they are obligated to pay prevailing wage, and you have to file this PW100 form at the time that the work is awarded. So that is designed so that the unions don't have to be sniffing around figuring out who's doing works that they're not paying union-scale wages. So it's self-reporting. But it does not have a competitive bidding element to it. And the basic idea is if it involves the construction, repair, and maintenance of over $1,000, that's awarded to some outside company, they have to be a registered contractor with the state, and you gotta have your form saying that they have to pay prevailing wage. So I've talked to our counsel about it, and. So I've talked to our counsel about it and drafted something that updates our previous Article nineteen of the district policy. And that is in the Agenda Stated in Full, which basically provides that the Facilities Committee has discretion to order repairs of up to five thousand dollars per month for repairs and emergencies for protection and maintenance of district properties. And in accordance with the Public Contract Code, any order or contract for more than twenty-five thousand dollars for construction work, repairs, or supplies and materials shall be by competitive bidding, because that's what the law requires. So we're just putting it right in our policy. For construction jobs and purchases of materials of twenty-five thousand... Let's see. For public works projects between five thousand one and twenty-five thousand or purchases of supplies and materials between five thousand and twenty-five thousand, board approval is required, and three informal bids, or quotes, must be obtained where possible, unless it is determined that formal bids or additional procedures are required on a case-by-case basis. Informal bids means three written proposals, which may be obtained by phone or documented by email or other writing. In accordance with the Public Contract Code, any order or contract for more than twenty-five thousand for construction work, repairs, or materials and supplies shall be by competitive bidding, which must be published with notice for at least ten days. In any case where the law requires using a registered contractor and paying prevailing wages pursuant to the law and regulation promulgated by the Division of Labor Standards, Enforcement Public Works Manual, the Facilities Committee will follow the required procedures, including if applicable, for construction work of one thousand or more, using only a state-registered contractor, paying prevailing wages, and filing a FW one hundred form within five days of the award. Now that's the basic provision that's here. This does not apply to on-force people, our staff, our employees, and it doesn't apply to volunteer work, and it also doesn't apply to professional services. It's for things that typically are being built by people who are using equipment or repairing things, that kind of thing. So that's the basic provision to get us into compliance with the code, to give us some flexibility, to give some definition to what we need to do when, but also flexibility of taking a harder look at things on a case-by-case basis.
That's a PW one hundred.
PW one hundred.
Oh, it's not F?
Public Works. Okay. You need to make that.
P. Rehman. Yeah, it's good.
All right, I move that we adopt the policy on purchasing goods and services.
One second.
Do we have any discussion? Wendy?
I don't understand then, this stuff is going to apply in all cases where the law requires? So in what instance does the law require using a registered contractor?
It's not registered contractor. It's a contractor registered... Well, it's registered with the state. It's not the same thing as a licensed contractor.
But it is a registered contractor, and the statute defines what is a public work. And the basic dollar amount is a thousand bucks, and you're in that area. But public works is, you know, the kind of stuff that you would hire a contractor or a good repairman to do, to fix your buildings, to build something new, maintenance, et cetera. And it's a very... It's a hundred and twenty-five pages of material.
Yeah, okay, so I guess my question...
That's why we say that the Facilities Committee is gonna obey the law.
Okay, all right. Anyway, I'll ask someone later then, but it says where the law requires. So what law... What are we talking about? What law requires that?
Let's show it to her here.
In all cases where the law requires using a registered contractor.
This is why it's good to have Betsy Martin.
Okay, so it's all, it's all just...
It's in this Public Works Manual that is over a hundred and twenty pages that goes into all of this. But to make it easy for you, based upon my conversation with our counsel, if we... And as well as looking at a few materials here, but I did not read the hundred and twenty pages, and we'll see if I ever need to. But basically, if we're doing stuff out there or in here to repair or improve our buildings or our grounds...
Then we're not required by law to...
And it's a project that's gonna cost more than a thousand dollars for that project, then whether it's a repair or a new construction, then we've gotta be concerned about whether we meet this requirement. If we're using our own on-force employees and staff, then there is an exception for that.
What happened with emergency repairs, significant emergency repairs? You have to... You got a slab leak under the concrete or something that requires something more than a thousand dollars of root failure? Do you have to wait?
We tell Steve, you gotta fix it.
I do.
Because that is our...
But that doesn't violate that.
That's our quick answer, but the... I mean, this is... Let's talk perspective for just a second. This law and the unions are looking at what they're concerned about are really big projects where somebody's putting in new docks or whatever. And that's not to say we don't have to comply with this, but this is not about you got a, you know, one thousand two hundred dollar pipe that broke, and you just had to find somebody on Saturday night, and you did what you had to do. So, you know, we're gonna try to comply with this, but when emergencies happen, sometimes you have to do what you have to do, and, you know, it's good to have a list of people who are registered contractors. That solves your problem, okay? Rick?
Registration, it's a Department of Industrial Relations registration requirement for contractors, so that they can work on public works projects. Like you said, almost self-enforcement, although the unions now, or the labor organization groups that are formed by the union are going to go... Everything's gonna be... Has to be uploaded as of April first, two thousand fifteen, has to be uploaded to the DIR, to the Payroll Enforcement Division of the DIR. So then they can look at that stuff through Public Information Acts, or probably an ongoing Public Information Act, where they get to view all those documents on a regular basis, to make sure contractors are paying the prevailing wage, which ultimately competes with the unions' wages, which really doesn't, because they can use apprentices. That's a whole other story. But anyway, the... You... I mean, as the agency, you are required... We're seeing that all agency disclaimers that we have, all the bids that we're getting now, have that paragraph in it. You are required to be, and the agency is required to enforce who they're selecting the bid from. So again, some agencies have staff that can do that all day long. You guys are small. You can't do that. But like you said, to get a list of registered contractors, that would be something maybe prudent to your facilities department or your facilities committee. Thing is, you can, just like you said, the bidding and the public works bidding laws are totally separate than this new enforcement thing. But you are, if you do have a leak that's gonna cost twelve hundred dollars, you do have to notify the contractor that it is a public works project, that they're required, and you are still required, even though it's a leak, to file that PW one hundred form as an agency. So that's where that comes in. It's totally different than bidding. You don't have to bid and wait for that repair. You can have the repair. It's totally separate things.
Right, so my understanding is that contractors can register... They have a certain grace period to register. They get an award. They can register with the state. But we're gonna...
No, they're not. They're actually required as of March first of this year. You're required to be registered prior to bidding on public works projects. That grace period was from April first, two thousand fourteen, through March first, two thousand fifteen, that you could actually register after you were selected as a low bidder or selected and awarded a project. Now you must be registered to bid on public works projects. But again, that's on the contractor's side of things, but as an agency, you guys are required to know that.
Right, and the contractors... Most of this law, as I understand it, is directed to what contractors have to do, but we have to fill out this paperwork, and that way there'll be more self-reporting.
Right, but again, you have to advertise... I don't want... I'm sorry, I interrupted you, but you have to advertise that as part of the... As part of that job description. You have to let them know, and you have to... I can't... I'm not gonna say you have to enforce if they're registered, but you have to make it known that they must be registered to bid on those projects.
Right, and this is the language in there.
Right, so this is another layer of regulation. And right, if we have a... If we had a big organization, you know, this language that I proposed with Betsy Martin's help, you know, is talking very small amounts of money compared to what a lot of districts have. A lot of districts, like the... She sent me a form for the desert district. Their board doesn't even look at anything unless it's over fifty thousand dollars. The general manager handles anything below that and decides when to do competitive bidding and all the layers, and even the general manager doesn't even look at it if it's not over ten thousand. So, because they've got staff, and we don't have that, and that makes everything, you know, more difficult and fits and starts, and lots of things that you have to do that you don't have the training to do. But this is something that we do need to have, and I think formally as part of our purchasing process, so that people will know, oh, there's these issues out here, and we've gotta jump through it.
The California, just like the California Special District Association we talked about, we're already getting emails from them saying, you know, we're a small district. We like to use local contractors and stuff like that. The contractor... We're telling them they have to be, do all this stuff, and they're already telling us, we're not gonna do that, you know, we're not gonna bid on your projects. So it's for small districts like us, it's a pain.
Well, I'm also hearing already that our work is gonna cost more.
Yeah.
The kind of things that we're talking about doing here are gonna possibly be an extra thirty percent, so.
Unless we do it a thousand-dollar increments or something.
Can I... I would like to make a change in the language here. Instead of saying a registered contractor, I would like to say a contractor registered with the Department of Industrial Relations. Because people are gonna think it's the same thing as a licensed contractor, and it's not. A contractor registered with the Department of Industrial... With the California Department of Industrial Relations.
California DIR. Right, which is the group that put out this hundred and twenty-page manual, yeah.
I have one question now relating to the bidding part, because I know it's kind of combined in this. So on the informal bidding, or how are you guys gonna do like a scope of work? Because I did talk to Steve about the basketball court, and he just said, yeah, put a bid together. They got a bid from someone else, and put a bid together. Well, what's the scope? Do we take out, you know, all the asphalt? Do you compact the subgrade underneath? And that's part of the public works, part of the code on contracting, the one with the twenty-five thousand dollars, and is to have like a level playing field, you know. It can be informal. You can get quotes from different people, but you need to have some sort of level playing field. You have to have some sort of scope. It can be very basic, and again, you don't have staff to write that scope. Does Steve do that? Do you, you know, even when you request informal bids, you need to have something that they can get from, rather than just, oh, go out there and do this. Because I can look at that and say, that's ten thousand dollars, and Joe's gonna look at that and say, oh, man, I gotta do this, this, this. It's gonna be fifty thousand dollars. But you're gonna have a better product from Joe that's gonna do it for fifty thousand dollars, if that makes sense. So from contracting-wise on your informal bids...
I think it's gonna go case by case, and I mean, we don't... We, again, none of us are construction managers or engineers.
Right.
None of us are even close to that, and what I would guess with this board we would be doing is talking to some people to get various ideas on what needs to be done, and there may be different takes on what needs to be done. And so you may get informal bids where one person is saying, I'm gonna take this part out and compact it and put gravel under it, or whatever, or, you know, use...
You gotta have a scope of work.
There has to be a scope of work.
I would... What we've had some agencies do to us is that we've worked with in the past doing something, hey, I need this done. So we actually go out with them, we write the scope of work, give them a bid, and then they tell us, that's over our dollar amount. We're gonna have to put this out to public bid, or to informal bid, or request for proposals. So then they take my proposal. No, it's no big deal. It is what it is, you know? And they take my proposal, they take everything off except the scope of work, and they cut and paste it onto a page and say, request for proposals, here's the scope of work. And then they have an estimate, because they give engineers' estimates. Well, those engineers' estimates come from contractors. So then they say, the estimate on this project's fifteen thousand dollars. So everybody that's bidding it knows where less the budget is for the district and what the exact scope of work is. And again, sometimes that falls on the contractor, and then I have to rebid it against two other guys, which is part of the way it works.
You could kind of... You could look at, when they redid the building over here, that was a hundred and eighty thousand or something like that, I don't remember what it was, but that was a pretty big...
Yeah, I'm trying to remember too.
But you could look at that and give you a general idea of how that all works.
We had a complete scope of work for that.
Yeah.
And remember, we had walkthroughs, and people bid on it, and we did the whole formal procedure for that. But yeah, Rick, you're right. You have to... Everybody's gotta bid on the same apple. It's gotta be the same apple.
Exactly.
All right, well, that's down the line from when we actually start trying to do some work. So... Let's see if we can... Can we take this to a vote now? We did have... Did we have a motion? Okay, so... Have we changed the language? So all those in favor of adopting Action Item F as our new policy on purchasing goods and services, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So that'll pass. And now we're down to Facilities Committee. So Phil, why don't I turn this over to you, at least for the action items.
Yeah, before we get into the action items, I'll just let you guys know. Steve and I had a little talk about a possible way of bringing some things up to snuff, which would be kind of a three-week blitz of Steve just basically focusing just on our work for about three weeks. And I don't think I'm right now prepared to give a whole proposal, but maybe next meeting we'll give a proposal. But I wanted to throw that out to you guys, especially in light of the new law and everything, that since Steve made that offer to juggle his schedule around, so he gives us three straight weeks of... You know, this might be something we would wanna do, since he's on our staff. It simplifies a lot of things, and we can kind of hit all this stuff.
Are there some particulars you wanna explain of what you guys were talking about in this blitz?
Well, we hadn't gotten too detailed about all the different things, but as we looked around to the facilities and counted up all our fifty different things, I think there's a good three weeks' worth of straight work to do various things around here. I mean, ranging from the drinking fountain or whatever. And it might coordinate with the same time that this fellow needs his volunteer time in for the court, you know, now that we're on board with that. So we might be able to really get some, a lot of these things of the meeting to be done, done. I'm not gonna... I'm not making an action item this time around. I'm just throwing this out for you guys to think about for next meeting, I think.
Well, I'll just say right out of the chute, I think if we can start accomplishing a number of the things on the fifty item list soon, that would be great, because there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done, and a lot of it is just really delayed deferred maintenance. I think that if we can make our parks and buildings look better, that is something we ought to be doing. So I'm in favor of the concept.
I just wanna say that I think that we need to... We have our list, but we need to move beyond that. The more that I've been in the buildings and moving things around and stuff like that, there's a lot of really, really small things that will make a big difference, like the yellow paint is chipped out there on the steps, and there's like... There's small things that weren't big enough to make it to our list, but there are things that when people walk up to a building, they make a difference in terms of thinking that it looks good or not.
Well, and I'm thinking that working with Steve, between now and the next meeting, when we would okay this... when we would okay this, that we would talk and.
Do a list.
Yeah, and just do little things and we could even prioritize them as to what needs to be done and whatnot and then, and then just hit them and just knock them out, get them done and, you know, especially if we can get our, I call him Steve Slade. As soon as we get Steve's assistant to help out too and maybe me too, so we'll just do some stuff.
All right.
So that's for next time. I'm, um, I'm tempted, because I always like condensing things down and, and making them fast. I'm tempted to say, to make a motion to approve action items A through E in one fell swoop. Is that possible?
That's a good idea.
Can we do that unless anybody, you wanna check those out, you guys? Does anybody have any questions?
Most of them already have been approved by previous board actions.
Yeah, it could be, so maybe they have.
We approved the process in the court in the last one. We approved the painting. Uh, I presume the skateboard park signs, I thought those were approved previously for a hundred and forty-five dollars. Didn't you get?
Did I forget that? So like, didn't I put it on this agenda?
Well, I thought that was discussed and approved already.
Well, let's just approve them all, John, and I will put them on again.
Right.
A through E, so I make a motion that we approve action items A through E.
Second.
Who's supposed to say all in favor? Is that the president?
That's me. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, so that, good idea to consolidate.
So now we're on to gazebo.
Yeah, so let me tell you guys what's happened with that and, um, um, so we had, I had another contractor out here who does a lot of public works projects, but he didn't know about the change in the law, so we can't do anything on it.
Oh.
Um, so I'll just bring it up next time.
Okay.
Well, he gave you a little bit better price, but apparently neither one of the people you talked to about this are registered with the Department of Industrial Relations.
Right, because they didn't know about it.
Right.
Even though they, you know.
They do gazebo's.
Right. Even though, but he has done gazebo's in parks, but the law wasn't in place then, so. Anyway, so I'm emailing him back and forth and I assume that he'll register.
All right. And, and we would like to hopefully get that at the next meeting because we have, we've got our first wedding for this week. So somebody in our canyon community, uh, her daughter's getting married and the very next day she was in contact with us, so we hope we can provide a nice.
The day after she got the proposal.
Right. In a panic, so hopefully we can do something. So let's get on then to the next item, which is more discussion on stoves. Um, and at the last meeting, um, I mentioned a stove that, um, uh, was, seemed very powerful and it was, um, a good price, twenty-one hundred dollars. But unfortunately, um, I think, I think Linda said, uh, Karen suggested, better call your architect just to make sure that your firewall and spacing is appropriate. So Bruce Newell was kind enough to talk to us, uh, about the stove that we were proposing, which is a commercial stove, they don't have a lot of insulation, they're very hot, in other words. And he said that would not be an appropriate stove and we should go with something that's more like a high-end, uh, stove that residents, residential, has residential use because you get a lot better insulation, insulation. So, um, back to the drawing board and, um, I did a lot of looking and the stove that, um, I recommend, it's not as good a price, but, um, it has all this insulation and won't burn the building down. Um, so it's, um, three thousand dollar stove, uh, according to a couple of websites. Costco carries it, but they're currently out, it gets good reviews on Costco. It's called an N X R D R G B thirty-six oh-two, six burners, um, that are high-powered. I think it was fifteen thousand B T U each and a large oven, um, convection oven. It, um, got a good report from Consumers Report. Our library didn't have the November, uh, I think it was twenty thirteen, uh, magazine that spoke about it in detail, which was in a lot of the, um, the comments, the positive reviews on this stove about how they got a stove for half the price of a Viking or a Wolf. But I did get from our library the buyer's guide showing that it, um, is in there and for three thousand dollars it rates a fifty-six, uh, which is better than a Kenmore or a Gen Air. It's not as good as a Viking or a Thermador, which costs seven thousand to seven thousand five hundred. Um, a number of the people commenting said that they didn't like their Viking because the igniders were always going out, which is what I experienced when I bought one years ago. Seemed like on Thanksgiving Day you would find out your igniter wasn't working. So this is, um, anyway, we have a bath stove over there. It's a Toastmaster and it looks like it's probably from, I would guess, the fifties. Um, but I know one oven doesn't work and I know some of the burners don't perform like you want them to and I've heard complaints from others as well. Um, but when we tried to use it for the Thanksgiving, uh, event, um, it was not anything like I hoped it would be and it looks very, very old and decrepit. So if we want to, um, get in a, this is a, a six burner stove with a big oven. It's not a double oven, um, but, um, it does, uh, seem to meet the specs and have the insulation and you can either get it at Costco when they get it back in. Ren West said they could probably get us one. You can also order it on Amazon. Um, and generally they get good reviews, so that's my proposal. Anything, anything as an alternative to that is probably gonna cost twice as much money unless we're gonna revamp our kitchen and make it commercial safe with huge faces and firewalls, et cetera.
How much is it at Costco?
It was three thousand dollars at Costco, as I recall, but they didn't have it. They said that there, it's not that they discontinued it, they just don't have any right now. Keep checking. Uh, the guy at Ren West said he thought he could get us one, which would mean we could use a local reputable company to get it, but I don't know what, you know, kind of time would be involved because they didn't have it that day.
So, can I talk a little bit first?
Oh, Debbie wants to talk.
Yeah, that's good.
All right.
Um, so the other thing about this, it's thirty-six inches, the hood is forty-eight inches, so it would fit under the hood. We'd have the clearance on both sides for the cabinets and we're gonna do it with propane, so we get the propane converter kit. And then Steve, how much would it cost to run a propane line to it?
I don't know, a couple hundred bucks.
Okay.
Is that something Danny would do, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I will mention that some of the reviews noted that the conversion is difficult, the propane conversion. And I actually got one comment about how you have to order this special tool and maybe grind it down a bit.
But Danny should know how to do that.
Danny does it all the time.
Yeah, that's what I would think and like I say, I actually found a review that somewhere in this mess tells you what you need to do to the tool. So I figured we have people in the canyon who are capable of doing that kind of work, so.
It'd be nice to have a double oven, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
I wanna get a microwave that's also an oven. I have one that's also an oven and I think we should just do that because that microwave there is a dinosaur.
A double oven would be nice, but, um, I couldn't find it. Um, and I, I mean, there are actually some thirty inches that are double ovens, but that's too small. And this has six good top burners. Um, and I didn't see anything with better B T U than this until you got into the commercial range, which Bruce was saying you guys shouldn't go there, so.
I was just gonna comment on, you know, talking to, um, the folks that come in and caterers, okay? I would, I think in my experience, you don't, when you have a big party or something, you don't, you need more oven than burners. You know, I mean, six burners, I don't think many people would ever use six burners at a time. I think that's total overkill, but you would certainly be using an oven or a warming oven or an oven and a boiler or something like that more than six burners.
Well, and I'll note that this, this oven is, um, I think one inch short of taking commercial trays.
Oh, yeah.
So that was a problem too, but.
Gotcha.
To solve that problem, you get into a much higher expense level or else you're talking commercial again, which.
You can't do that.
Which I, it just sounds like that would be, we have to redo our kitchen, so.
John, how big is the oven? Does it have a spec size on there?
Yeah, I, I think it's five point six cubic feet.
Is it big enough to fit two turkeys in there, say, or?
Says it's large.
It's five point two cubic feet. I have a picture of it. Um, it's fairly large, but it is not a giant oven. Uh, but at least it's a bigger oven than what we have and it's got good burners, really good burners compared to what we have. But I'm not a caterer, I don't know whether caterers are all about ovens, as many as possible or burners. Um, I do, I cook every day of my life virtually for a lot of people, including groups of thirty-five or more and to me it's about burners, but maybe that's because that's what I cook.
Sterno.
So.
Sterno.
There you go.
Makes place with you.
Well, that caterers come in with a lot of their own gear and the idea here is this would be a big enough stove that you could have a family reunion and people could bring things and you could do a lot with it. Uh, or, you know, we had someone last year who was doing canning, um, in the canyon. Marion was doing that and she said our oven was just horrible. It was a really, it was a really difficult experience and six good burners for canning is what it's all about. And I'm not saying we're gonna do that again, but, um, do we, do we wanna move on this or do we wanna?
Are you hot on this oven, Phil?
He spent, he has spent probably three full days looking at ovens and talking to people. This was a huge amount of time.
It was.
It's complicated.
It's very complicated and I, I mean, I don't know any caterers to talk to and do a survey with them, but I know we've got a really, really ugly oven and if I were thinking of renting our facility to have a nice event like maybe a wedding for my daughter, when I got into the kitchen and took a look at that oven, I would say, mm, I don't know.
Well, my experience with a caterer is all the food is prepared already. And it's put in a truck and it's come here and then it's heated up. I've never known one caterer to come and cook unless it's, you know, a private party and they got there the night before and they started cooking in your kitchen.
Yeah.
I think this oven's great, I think you did great work and, and considering what we have in there and what we can't have, this is, I think, the best alternative.
It will fit and it meets specs, so.
The oven door is about as wide as that door right there. Thirty-six inches.
Any other comments or should we?
Do it.
Let me move on. Something other than ovens.
Do it.
South Coast Auction tomorrow, they got a double burner Viking. I emailed it to you.
A double burner?
Yeah, a double oven.
Is it, is it commercial?
He's had a Viking, he won't buy one.
Oh, you won't get a Viking?
Well.
Starting with how many burners? How many burners does it have?
It's got, um, eight and eight, but there's two, there are two, uh, there's two on one side that are griddle.
Is it commercial or is it?
Not to residential.
Yeah, we don't wanna griddle, probably.
You can, I think you can replace those on the Vikings over there.
You've been really hounding me to go to South Coast Auction. The deal is, I'm gonna go there and I'm not gonna have any reviews, I'm not gonna know what to do.
Okay, okay, well, you can, you can check this out online before you go there.
All right, well, we could agree.
I emailed it to you.
Okay.
So I move that we buy the N X R.
Buy those too. Just say buy any oven you want.
Yeah, just approve it.
Like you want, John.
Well, we could approve that I could buy this or I could buy an oven that I think is, um, this is good, but cheaper with Steve's help.
So, so it's, it's three thousand, so let's approve, what, thirty-five hundred? I don't know how much tax and everything.
It's gonna need the L P conversion and it's gonna have the possibility of tax, although I.
Well, and, and you can put in the piping of propane.
Right.
The cost into that also.
So thirty-seven hundred, maybe?
Probably.
Okay, well, let's say up to thirty-eight hundred.
Okay.
Just do what you have to do.
Well, why don't you make the motion?
I move that we buy this, that we buy a stove for the Silverado Kitchen with approval up to thirty-eight hundred dollars.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes.
One thing I was gonna say, how, how are we gonna pay for this?
Yeah.
Is it gonna be by check or, or?
Yeah, you should probably pay by check.
Okay. By check, the credit card, if we're first.
Well, I think it will depend on who we use.
I do it all the time.
If we buy from Ren, Ren West, I presume they will take our check. If we buy it, if I have to get it online.
Well, you let me know.
Okay.
And, you know, we can, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna run up your credit card.
No, he would run up my credit.
My plan is that financially you will never know I was here when I'm gone in two years. He never got a check, he never spent anything.
It'll be a ghost.
Ghosts.
Yeah, but, or I can.
All right, well, that's great, so we got that done and I appreciate being able to move forward.
Okay, so on to the, on to H.
Yes.
Okay, the, the septic system repair, now that we have our policy, um, I'd like to, to get on to one and two of those things for next time and be more, talk more intelligently about what we're doing. Uh, the cycle of plant maintenance.
That's me.
Okay.
So I talked to Laura Roberts and she's going to, um, monitor the plants. She's already been to visit them and made a few suggestions and I called her back today, but I'm waiting for her re, her return call. What?
I just visiting the plants, but.
Okay, anyway, so she's gonna like take them over, but she's gonna have to work with Steve about the sprinklers and stuff like that.
It is, okay, so four and five, same as one and two.
Right.
We'll look for. Now that we're clarifying.
Should I cover six?
Six is.
Maybe next meeting we'll cover that.
Yeah. Rick, thanks for also kinda helping us be aware of all this stuff. You were, I think, might have been the first to mention it all, so thanks.
Yeah, we'll have to bid everything so we can use your bid to go out and bid.
Yeah, well.
It happens.
So I'm done.
All right. Okay, so next meeting, hopefully we're gonna maybe have some proposals on some of these big items.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll see, will we can move forward now?
All right, um, then we're on to the recreation committee, Kevin.
Oh, yeah.
I'll help you with bingo.
Yeah, bingo's been, bingo sounds like a, a lot of fun, but it's, it's become a big legal matter. And I think I'm gonna give this to John to, so I don't have to read every word to you and overview it. Why don't you take this, John, on the bingo?
There is a lot of interest in bingo everywhere. I think everyone wants to do bingo and people here in Silverado and Majeska brought it up and, um, it's something that the board would really like to offer, but, um, going into the details of it, the first thing that became apparent is this is obviously gambling, a form of gambling if you pay for cards and to be.
Cash prizes, you mean?
No.
Or anything.
If you get, if you pay for cards and you get prizes, that is within the gambling, uh, category. And they have carved out in California a way to do it that's a safe harbor and it involves using a nonprofit. It does not involve using, using a governmental agency such as our own. And I talked to, um, one of the assistants at the Orange County Sheriff's a couple times and also had emails with her and I don't know that she'd ever heard of, you know, an arm of the government wanting to do bingo, so.
Must be the part of separation of church and state.
Yeah, well, um, but we wanna do bingo and the way we would have to do it is through a nonprofit. Um, and I have. And I have prepared a one-page proposal that gives kind of the key points on how to do it legally. You have to have a nonprofit, and according to the Orange County regulations, the bingo license applicant must either own property in Orange County or have leased it for at least twelve months and hold a bingo event there. Right, yeah, which really narrows it down. But I think ICL is a possible bingo licensee. And I'm, I, I don't think that there is another group that can say, we've used. For instance, if we held it here, they can say, we continue, we've used this as our place, and we would, you know, basically, they're leasing it from us as a place that they've met for many, many years. So I think we could probably make that work. But it does have to be a nonprofit, which they are, and it does have to be offered at the place you own or at the place you lease, and in Orange County for at least twelve months. By state rule, it doesn't, they don't have that twelve-month rule, I don't believe. So we have both state statutes that regulate this, as well as our Orange County statute. And briefly, the games must be open to the public. You can't have minors who participate. The bingo must be conducted by volunteer members of the nonprofit who are not paid out of bingo proceeds. They are bingo officers, and I think they can wear badges. Which probably can take it over the top.
And they can make fifty thousand a year just running bingo.
It's not that expensive, but there is an expense. It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a three-year license. And your bingo officers, you have to have two, one to watch the other one. And they have to pay, I think, forty-four dollars to be fingerprinted, and maybe a ten-dollar license ad or something like that. Anyway, you gotta have bingo officers. They take the cash, they play the game, they make a ledger, they put it in a separate account. And they can't commingle with other funds. And they must use the proceeds for charitable purposes. So those are the basics of how it works.
Cap. Yes. Per game, not per night. The law limits to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per game.
Two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per game.
So this could become a big moneymaker for ICL.
Well, there's, I mean, you drive around in Southern California, and there are bingo halls, and I know they are making good money. Kevin's been trying to convince me that I could come out of retirement and become a bingo officer myself, because he saw something saying you can make fifty, sixty thousand dollars being a bingo officer.
You guys can lease the other room to Gamblers Anonymous. Win, win.
Down there in Orange, where my husband has a shop, there's an industrial area, and they have bingo there twice a week, and it's canned high school. And it's at night, so all the tenants are gone. They fill up every parking spot in that whole industrial.
My guess is if we had bingo and we advertised it. We'd get a draw here, and the question would be, how can we get all the people in one of our rooms? I may be wrong, but, I mean, I, I, a lot of people, their eyes actually get bigger when you start talking about bingo, so. But we need someone to work with us. So the idea is that maybe we could present this to ICL formally as something they really ought to look at and consider doing, so that we could offer a, a program that I think would help them raise funds, but also provide fun and recreation for people in, here in the canyon. So, and, you know, I think it would be nice if we could get a rental fee if it turned out to be a profitable endeavor for them, and that's acceptable, that they can pay us a rental fee, which could be our, I guess, our.
Ten percent usually goes to the house.
I don't know, but.
It would be the house.
Is that, are you talking Las Vegas rules? I was thinking fifty bucks if they make good money, but in any case, I'd like to see if we can have a dialogue with ICL and see if they're interested enough that they'd like to pursue this. So that it doesn't just die because there's regulations and it turns out we can't do it directly.
Yeah, it just, there's a lot to do, but, I mean, in a nutshell, I mean, they just apply for a bingo license, appoint two members of the ICL. I wonder if it's voting members, or it's gonna have to be an elected member. And then set up a separate bank account and file quarterly reports, income and expenses.
Is, is there regulations on how much money can go out in a bingo game?
Yeah, for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per game can be one.
Right. Yeah, and I don't think we'd be looking at, at that being a problem. I, I, I'm not, I haven't been to a bingo game, I think, since I was in grade school, but. Has anybody been to one and paid for the cards? How much do they charge?
Well, we used to charge a dollar a card, I don't know.
We used to have children's center bingo here in a grand for almost a year.
It's legal.
No, we didn't, no, it wasn't.
Well, no, we're not gonna talk about that. About a dollar a card, and Ed, what do you, what did you think? Is that what it's typical?
It's been a few years, but you would, there's different levels. You can buy one card, or you can buy five cards for a discounted price, or ten cards. You'll see people in the seat of cards.
It's not been a long time.
They just have their dober going crazy, so it's, yeah, it's a good time. He goes to Texas, he earns a dozen dollars, that even. It's been about ten years, but, yeah.
Being a part of this bingo that we're not talking about, we didn't have cash. We, the cho, the, the organizers of the bingo had to go and get prizes, and that exhausted them. And there wasn't even cash payout, only cash coming in.
The prizes had cash.
But if it was, if, if it didn't involve going out and soliciting and getting prizes and all that, and it was just cash, I think it would be really successful.
Well, we talked about meat bingo. I wanna have good cuts of meat, at least some prizes. The, the alternative, I do think it's probably legal to have bingo where people don't pay anything, and all the prizes are donated, and you just get cards and you can have that, but I don't see that as being probably very viable. So, and senior organizations, there is some kind of exception for that, but, and I know they do it at, like, assisted living care. I think every one of them has bingo, and that's probably written for them as opposed to, you know. I, I think if we were gonna do it here, you could have a senior organization possibly do it, but I, I didn't see anything on the regs on that. And my assumption is it's more like for either a nonprofit that is a senior organization, or it's an assisted living facility or something like that, so. That, I mean, the alternative is you do it with donation, donated stuff, and people don't pay anything for the cards, and it's kinda like if you've ever played poker and you, you're not paying for money, it's not the same thing. Right? So I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I think you want money and you want big prizes, right? Yeah, so.
So I think that we need to present this to ICL at their next meeting and see if they would be interested.
Right, why don't we make that the motion? Or do we even have to make a motion on that?
I think we have.
Cause we're representing ourselves.
Oh, okay. As a, as the house, give me ten percent.
Yeah. So, so then, do I need to move that we present ICL proposal for bingo?
Yeah, let's do that, and then we don't have a question of whether we need to the motion or not. We'll just do it. So I'll second it. All those in favor of presenting this proposal to ICL, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Question, um, to take that a step further, thinking about how you could also make more money from that. Could you sell alcohol, cigarettes? There's a bingo hall went through, there was two sections, smoking and non-smoking, and you can see this cloud of smoke and the smoking. But are there other things you could do to generate more revenue at a bingo?
I think there are, but I don't think that selling alcohol is legal. I think that's, as I recall, that is one of the things, I didn't put all the restrictions, but I think it's no minors and no alcohol.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It would be hard, because you can't get a one-day license every time you do bingo, right?
It takes a little work, but you could.
But you might be able to have cigarettes, don't we have a rule about that too?
We have no smoking.
Yeah, so.
Maybe the alcohol.
Right, we could possibly have.
Well, we could have concessions.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just called concessions.
Well, that's, that was one of the ideas, is you could have, you could have it combined in the pot.
We had pizza and soda before. We sold pizza, soda, and bingo, daughters and bingo cards. Linda was here.
We could sell thermoses.
I remember.
All right, so we have agreed to present to ICL.
Yeah.
I have the bingo.
I thought you were gonna say. I thought you were gonna say you have the bingo fever.
The bingo to me.
I didn't know.
It's like, oh, no!
All right, are we ready for the next item?
The purchase of restoration equipment. I was, I was, interesting, the action I'd be purchasing of recreation equipment. I'm not sure if we wanna have a proposed up to amount, but one of the things right off, if we, we can put it off until we find out if we're gonna resurface the basketball court. But obviously, we need to upgrade the basketball nets and the rims. I mean, the rims don't even hold nets anymore.
And we approved at the last meeting, your ability to purchase five hundred dollars worth of recreation equipment, so you already have that allowance.
I think, I actually think, you know, I was at a preschool in LA, and they had all these little, like, basketball things for little kids to play that were really cute. They didn't have a lot of stuff in their yard, but they had that and a few other things. And also, when I ran a children's center, when I had two hundred kids there, having things for the yard, it's really important, so I'd like to work with you maybe on trying to figure out some inexpensive equipment we could get, so that there'd be more to do here on rec day than ping pong and foosball. And rushay too.
I'd like to say also, I buy sporting equipment, soccer balls, volleyball, baseball mitts, pretty much at cost. You know, the half of retail or less. So I can always use my connections for that.
Good. Van maintenance?
And, and a four, a couple of four-square balls. Play against the, the backstop. Those are really great.
And then getting to van maintenance, I noticed on the records and the booklet, our van is getting to the mileage where we need to do a certain checkup, not, not tune-up, not maintenance, but a service. It needs a service done, so I'd like to propose, we have a, my mechanic that I use up here, actually Karen's husband, I leave him my car, he drives it to his shop, he does all the service and drives it back. I don't think he's gonna do it for everybody. But I've already checked with him, and he would do that with the van. He's got great prices, great integrity, great service. And I was hoping to propose that, and pretty much, maintenance is maintenance, it's gotta be done, and there's, you know, it's, it costs what it costs. I think our van is a great asset. I looked it up in Blue Book, and I think you could replace it for five to six thousand dollars. But it's still something we have. It's got relatively low mileage, but I propose that we get it maintained.
What's the, what's, what does it need? Does it need like a new serpentine belt, or does it need a new?
There's a well change. There's booklet, there's, there's, there's a whole booklet on what needs to be done. I don't even know if it could be done.
I mean, I just was wondering.
Um, it's, you go through the breaks, you go through the lubing and, and.
Well, you need to get a price, so we can prove that.
Well, but the problem is, you're gonna have a guy go there, you're gonna get the price after they look at it.
Right, you, you've gotta have a.
He could probably give you an initial price just to take a look at it, and then tally up whatever his findings are for your approval.
And he can call in, but then, but then it's gonna be out of commission. It'll be down there.
I think we should approve.
I think we gotta approve a budget, because the maintenance is maintenance. It costs what it costs.
Prove it up to three hundred dollars.
You know, you, and it all depends on what hasn't been maintained. It costs even more. Besides the maintenance, it could be the replacement.
When was the last?
Neglected for so many years.
Oh, that's what I was gonna ask. When was the last maintenance?
So that, see, that's, that's the, that's what you don't know before you get, open it up.
Right, so why don't we just approve up to like seven fifty?
Okay, and then if it's more than that, we just have to.
He could authorize it for emergency repairs.
That's true.
Yeah.
Cause that's part of.
And maintenance.
That's part of the, you have repairs up to five grand. Well, we can just put it under that, right?
Yeah, let's just put it under that. Yeah, so we don't have to approve it.
Yeah, okay, so let's just do it. There you go.
All right, then what I would have to do is find out the best day. They're not open on weekends. What's the best day?
We use the van tag every day to complete that.
Well, then we're gonna have to find another way. The maintenance gotta be done. I don't care if you've got a van or not a van. You, you gotta take the kids somewhere. The van has to be fixed. You're gonna ruin that asset.
Then you can do it over spring break. When we're only using it two days.
It goes by a mileage thing. That's, that's why, that's why cars last a long time.
Spring break is in, you know, next week, the week after.
That sounds like a reliable thing. What, can you give Kevin a couple days that he can write down?
Oh, Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
What's the date? Do you need dates?
Sixth, eighth, tenth.
Okay, sixth, eighth, or tenth of April.
Okay, because it's, I would just hate to have the brakes go out or something.
Well, they had brakes and tires last year. They had maintenance, red tires done in May, two thousand fourteen.
It's just an example. We need to.
Okay, so it's been like almost a year. That's good.
Yeah, and then it wasn't driven for like four or five months.
It's on mileage thing. The things need to be done because of mileage, not anything that's gone wrong. Things have to be done at a certain stage of mileage. So it depends on what mileage is on the van is what's gonna get done.
So can Karen report on the recreation stuff? Where did she go?
Oh, before we go there, while we're still in the van, we now have insurance, but it appears that that had lapsed. And I brought that yesterday, and there wasn't insurance.
No, there was no lapse. The paperwork got sent to Citrus Heights address.
It was, there was a, a screw up on the, on the insurance. It was, it didn't lapse. Megan covered it, but the reason Capri said that it wasn't insured was because it wasn't insured through Capri. It was insured through Alliant through Capri.
Okay.
And because of that, Alliant sent the policy to Capri instead of sending it to us.
Okay, so we didn't have a lapse. What about the registration?
The registration, you're still looking for that, right? Looking around.
Yeah, I never received the tags.
Are the little, it's probably just that little plastic sticky.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, which are.
And Megan, you know, it was all paid and.
So it's, so it's lost in space.
It appears we registered, but we didn't get the sticker on the tag.
Well, I guess, I don't know. I thought we got maybe both of them, and they just got lost somewhere around.
Cause they don't come to the children's center, they come to. We have like states.
Okay, but as best we have, has anybody checked with DMV to see if we are registered? Or, because they're not gonna send us a renewal if we let it expire here.
They're not, you're not gonna get information over the phone, or it's probably.
Go to triple, go to AAA. Does anybody have triple A's? Yeah, they'll take care of it. Go to AAA. They got the tag down there. If you're registered, they'll give you replacements.
Yeah, I actually had this issue with my car two months ago. I had registered, but I never received tags. I threw them away accidentally, but if you go online, you can see if you're registered, and if you are, you can get more tags sent to you for a fee of like twenty-five dollars, something like, or maybe it's fifty dollars. They'll send you a new set of tags.
You can check online with DMV to see if a car has been registered. All right, we'll, we'll follow up on that just to make sure we're registered.
I mean, I guess you're willing.
I've got the information. I sent you that.
I got that, so, yeah, I'll check on it.
Okay, so Karen was gonna talk about what she's been doing.
I've been looking at what we have, and it just seems the system that we have is a little disjointed. So, because we have the people that lease the facilities as instructors, or, and then you have the random, you know, one-timers that do it. Also, on the, the new website, there's. Also, on the, the new website, there's not a calendar. So I was like, okay, cause I was searching all over for that and I was like, where is the calendar?
The old one.
No, there's a calendar there.
Right, right.
I found it today.
Is it dash gov, the new website?
No.
No.
The calendar's there.
On the right hand side.
On the right hand side, it gives all the facility, oh, wow.
But we're going to change it, it's gonna have a calendar for the Silverado Fairgrounds and Community Center, and then it's gonna have one for Majeska.
That would be better.
So it's not gonna, if you're planning something for Majeska, you, you're gonna have a calendar just for that, you just have to look there. And if you're planning for Silverado, you'll have a calendar there and you just have to look there.
Perfect, because.
And if you're looking for an event, if you want it in your neighborhood, or if you're looking to have it, you know, if you're looking for a zumba class, you can look by your facility, you know, your neighborhood.
Also, the calls are coming in to Silverado. We have that access code to remotely access it now, but I do wanna change the greeting to include more information and also visiting, you know, asking them to visit our website, calendar, if they are interested to see what's available and, you know. And then also, I would like to come up with generated responses for people that email or people that have used the facilities. Also, I received the sign in sheet from when you did the chi, chi, chi from Majeska. So I created a spreadsheet with that. And I'm not putting telephone numbers on for the people that are coming, cause I figured that just, you know, we wouldn't really have a need, but it's nice to have their email address, you know, and thank them or, you know, send them like a, you know, oh, we have something that's coming up in our neighborhood, just, you know, so together the data, that's just in my idea.
On your first thing about creating a new message, go ahead and write something up that you'd like to do and we'll even use your voice.
No, I don't think so.
And then, let's write it up and then email it to Debbie and myself and we'll add anything to it.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I wanted to meet with you to go over some other stuff.
Okay, so we should probably have a meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And could you please remind, email and remind the people you haven't gotten agreements from yet?
Right, okay, yeah.
Cause we're still missing some.
And also, on the emails that you have collected from the people who sign in, we'd like to have those and we'll put them on our email list.
Right.
We're generating our own SMRP email list.
Well, no, Wendy already did it. It's nine hundred and fifty names, but I'm cleaning it up. I'm actually updating a lot of the email addresses that I know are different.
See, that was the thing, that's why I said, yeah.
So we're gonna have.
What we have to do is like, find out if those are still current, because there.
Well, I'm just changing the ones I know and we'll figure out a way to test them when we roll them up.
And the reason the emails are important for everybody here, just so you know, and you can tell other people, we are gonna phase out the brochure printing. And we're gonna go to eBlast to send out information about our rec programs, about any special programs, about movie nights, about concert parks, everything's gonna be sent out in an email to let everyone know. It's gonna be a lot more efficient and a lot cheaper.
Uh, meeting notifications too on that or not?
We can do meeting notifications also and not to.
For SMRPD.
For SMRPD. So, you know, I understand your rules about for profit, so we're gonna be able to send, anybody who's having a class that's for profit is gonna go out through the SMRP email, email list. Yeah, right.
How did this become Silverado Fairgrounds?
Always been Silverado Fairgrounds, ever since the concerts started.
Is that an official board thing or does it just have a top's version of it? I'm just curious.
It's always been that.
I would encourage you guys to go look on the website. It's, we're still working on it, but under, but I, under special events, you can see everything that's happening, or not everything, but most of the things happening in the next few months. It's, it's a huge list of everything and I don't think the community's ever had such a comprehensive list of activities and events.
Alright, let's, are we ready to move on to chili cookoff? We have approval of the banner.
Yeah, without going into too much detail, cause it's kind of sensitive. We had homemade painted wooden signs for the community painted by Laura McDougall and she was very resourceful. She did chili cookoff on one side and Silverado Country Fair on the other. Really cute and we would get them out every year and just change the date, touch them up and everything, but they were destroyed right before the fair. And so the chili cookoff signs on the other side got destroyed and they're not repairable anymore, they were destroyed twice. So we only have three little old banners that I've been changing the date on and hand painting myself. So I asked Kevin to come up with a, I didn't bring it, I'm sorry, a design for a banner to replace those wooden signs.
Well, it just looks just like the flyer.
It looks like the flyer, really beautiful and has just, just the important information for when you're driving by at fifty miles an hour. So we would get a really good deal, so that would be for two, five by twelve. One would be wind resistant, the other one would just be the strong vinyl and the wind resistant would go down at Jamboree. And then we could advertise the chili cookoff, because signage is everything for our events up here.
Two, five by twelve?
Well, one would go the other end, down by Cook's Corner, and one would be at Jamboree.
Yeah, but two, five by twelve and three hundred, that's great.
Twelve foot is really long.
That's long.
It's, it is, it's really long.
That's awesome.
Is it too long banner hanging?
No, no, not when you're.
At Jamboree, I was thinking it would be good, but it's easier to do the art setup and have them all the same than to change the art for another banner. The, the problem is, you know. Can we do it? We can do twelve, can't we? All through here. Yeah. Okay. We'll need, you know, the thing is that down at Jamboree, you know, all that's pretty much taken up with those mega constructed heavy duty things. And we usually piggyback off of those, which has not worked very well in the last couple of events, but. The Extravaganza says April fourth. If they're gonna take that down and not use it for anything, I was considering calling them and offering to take their banner down on April fifth and replace it with ours if they would let us use their wooden. That would be awesome, because. I know, I don't know if they would do it, I don't know. You know, cause we have to come up with a, a different system of, of hanging them up there, cause the last ones broke all those things, so I don't have that anymore. As primitive as those wooden signs were, they worked for Wendy and I, cause we could just pull up, stake into the ground, wire them on and be gone. And banners are much harder to put out in the wind and everything, but that's where we're at.
You may wanna measure the width of that, just in case.
Yeah, cause I don't know if that's twelve foot. Oh, it's pretty big. Well, I would suggest making sure that we, we measure if we're thinking of trying to use that one, we hate to be. Okay, twelve foot, twelve foot, it was a long poster.
Alright, well, should we authorize the banners?
We can always adjust the sizes.
Right, you can adjust the sizes.
We're not, we're not, we could go, we can do five by ten. Yeah.
Having worked with Shay on sizes of banners, I really, I really hate to have her go measure.
Alright.
I get it.
You're gonna give. Alright, well, I will vote to, or I will move to approve.
If someone could go with her and she could hold the zero in.
I'll, I'll move to authorize the expenditure of up to three hundred dollars for two banners. Is there a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Okay.
We are to the Children's Center Oversight Committee. Mr. Hock?
Alright, well, a report from the Oversight Committee is gonna be given to you by Francesca. I think she might have a few things to say.
I know the hours are getting late, so I'm gonna try and be quick. Thank you Phil, for going over the financials, showing how strong we're doing. We are doing much better, we're on a good track. I wanna thank everybody who's been supporting us, because I don't think we've made it to February without the help we got, so thank you everybody. But people have been working hard, Lori's been getting new people coming through, attendance is up consistently and our hours per kid are going up, because we're getting kids putting in more hours. They're actually putting in more days, so they're happy and they wanna stay. We have the horse Luna, who is out in the pens now with the goat and the sheep. And she's very friendly, she's a real draw and she's a good thing for the kids to see in the program. She won't be, she won't be using the program this week, but they'll be doing it up on some Wednesdays at what time Lori?
Ten thirty, eleven thirty.
And it's preschool kids who are learning how to do horse care. They, it's not riding and playing around, it's silliness, animal care. Yeah, it's, it's great, it's really wonderful. And things coming up for us, we have some fundraisers coming up that Ed's gonna be talking to you about. Lori contacted, worked with the Rotary Club that Ed is connected to and the Rotary came out and did some preliminary work viewing on the buildings and then the site, and they are going to be donating some scope award, which they will let us know what they can take on, but they looked at some things that needed to be done. And they're gonna take responsibility, which fits in with that contract thing, because it's all donated and volunteers. But, so they'll be doing that, that should be coming up shortly. And summer camp is coming up, so we would like, I know that's another item on the board coming up, but we are hoping to start advertising for summer camp coming up. And Lori was, did you wanna talk about attendance and tours you're doing and that kind of thing?
Just that attendance is consistently going up and we have consistent tours every week and pretty much everyone, four out of five people enroll that we tour, so.
Good capture.
Yeah, I've only had one person who's not enrolling and that's just because she researched the program and was concerned about it being open in the fall when she wants to register. We already have six kids registered for fall too.
Yep, so we are getting people.
For the preschool program.
We got a couple of fundraiser coming up and Ed's gonna talk about those, it should be a lot of fun for everybody.
Right before Ed talks, last meeting, since we touched on the summer program, last meeting, we can, we provisionally authorized SMRPD to do the summer program, subject to whether that was meeting licensing. You looked into that Lori and determined that we couldn't do it that way.
Well, we could, but we'll lose the school age license for altogether. Like I, I was under the impression that we could run the rec program for the summer and keep the school age license for the school year, but they said no, it would eliminate the school age license altogether and it's not worth it at that point.
Right, so instead, the summer program's gonna be run through the children's center.
Yes.
Alright, so that's something different than what we talked about at the last meeting, based upon your research. So I just wanted to let.
And that's your summer camp?
The summer camp, school age summer camp.
Your summer program is called your summer camp.
Summer camp.
I have a question on that, Ed, do you have any idea like how to advertise it? I know that summer kids came and went, it was February fifteenth.
No, no, we've got, Lori doesn't have a plan, we could talk about it later if you wanna talk about it. Yeah, we've got a plan in place, we're, we're good to go.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good, and Ed, I'm sorry I interrupted. Oh, there you are, okay.
Alright, so next Wednesday is April first, which is also April Fool's Day. So we were putting together what we're calling the Save the Goat Party at Goat Hill Tavern. Goat Hill Tavern's okay, it's not closing anytime soon, but we wanted to kinda play on that a little bit. So the event's, you know, the goat we're saving is Taffy, because if the children's center shuts down, where does Taffy go? And that's a big deal, you know, we need to save the goat. So we're building on that. That's, that's our kinda buzz that we're going after. There's a hashtag now, save the goat, probably hashtag votes, I just started that today. So we're asking for donations of twenty dollars for those who show up, free pizza, free peanuts. We're also gonna have one of the most ridiculous live auctions you've ever seen, auctioning things like peanuts and pizza and maybe some goat cheese and just having some fun.
Maybe some goat's milk.
We could, I wanna get a goat there and have a kiss the goat fundraiser as well, where let's say, you know, we want Lori to kiss the goat, but she says it costs five hundred dollars for me to do that, then we, everybody has to raise the money for, or we, or any of the board members like to participate on that, it'd be great. So try to have a little fun, but we, we don't have a goat secured yet, we're working on that.
We've got lots of old man goats around.
They're not attached to another goat or another animal, so they don't get stressed out if we take them. That's why we won't take Taffy, because we wouldn't be able to take her alone.
And the Urban Rotary Club has made this their official mixer for the month, they do one social event every month, so we should have a really good crowd.
And what is the time?
Six o'clock until the cows come home, what I put on the flyer.
And where, where is the Goat Hill Tavern?
Goat Hill Tavern is.
It's on Newport Boulevard.
Yeah, Newport Boulevard, right across from the Triangle Square where the movie theater is and the new Bowlin Alley, so try to cross it from there.
If you wanna go down the park.
I told Shay I should take the van and get a designated driver.
I don't wanna drive.
Oh, that's right. Kevin's authorized.
Somebody that's authorized to drive should drive the van and we'll.
You said designated driver, I think you went to Kevin.
That's not a live. This is a true fundraiser.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've already posted this on our website under the activities and it's, and I, I didn't have any information until tonight.
Yeah, and I'll send you the flyer.
So we have, we have it posted on our SMRPD Facebook.
And there's a Facebook event.
Yeah, it's already gone on the children's center Facebook and on all of our personal Facebook and so.
Wow.
The Oversight Committee.
It's a good thing we have you on board, cause I don't think any of us would've come up with this idea. It all seems so obvious.
I have a question on your Rotary Club making that a mixer, what generally is the turnout on one of those? Do you have any idea?
Fifteen to thirty, it ranges. I think this will generate more interest than other ones, cause there's a lot more effort going into it and the idea is something that I think a lot of people are having fun with.
It's fun.
Yeah, it's fun, and where normally we'd just kinda go to some random place and sit down.
It's a fun place, as soon as you told me, I like the Goat Hill Tavern, I've been there only once, but I fell in love with it and it's a good excuse to go to a fun place too.
It's a, it's a true dive bar. You know, it's one of the few places in Orange County, you walk in, it really does smell bad. It's great, that's what I'm saying.
Kinda musty, yes, kinda musty.
I think you've covered it now.
Great idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Good news on the children's center, lots and lots.
Okay, can I bring up something?
Yeah.
Alright, so, so what I would like to propose, and I'm slipping it under the children's center and the summer camp stuff, is we don't have any activities for kids who are twelve to eighteen for the summer camp. And I have flyers here, Inside the Outdoors is offering a summer camp for kids that age. There's special ones, so, and if any of you guys want any flyers, they're up there. So I would like to, I would like to ask the board if we would be willing to subsidize half the cost of the camp for ten kids from twelve to fifteen and for five kids from sixteen to eighteen. And it's a way to build relationships with Inside the Outdoors and also give Canyon kids an opportunity to participate in something that's in their own community. So this, and it doesn't conflict with the children's center, because it's for kids from twelve to eighteen. So the price for the twelve to fifteen year olds is one sixty-five. If we offered to pay half, that would be eight hundred and thirty dollars for ten kids. And then I don't think there'll be as much interest in the kids from sixteen to eighteen and that's a hundred and ten dollars, so that would be fifty-two dollars, that would be two hundred and sixty dollars, so we're talking about eleven hundred dollars. And we could offer something to kids who were twelve to eighteen.
And this is, is this offered right next door to the children's center?
Yeah.
Yeah, all around the corner, kinda dumb.
And this is, this is O.C. Department of Defense.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is all standards based, it's all tied to their ages and stuff like that. And it would be easy for us to manage, cause we would just tell them, the first ten kids to register for that program, the first five to register, we would pay half and we would send out an email blast to families, and just the first ten kids and the first five, and then we'd just give them a check.
We'd make sure they're paying.
Right, cause when they register, they have to give their addresses and everything.
Yeah, sounds good, it sounds great.
So I move that we do this.
So, I move that we do this. I want to be the first to say that that is kind of a forgotten age group of kids in our Canyon. They're too old for the Children's Center, they're too young to leave, they get stuck in their homes, and that's, raising boys and raising a lot of other people's boys, that's the age that they start getting really bored and finding other things to do. And I just think that this could be really great.
It's just four days, but still, and it's June twenty-ninth to July second, I think. So, and also, for those, there's, um, Inside the Outdoors is having a, a family event on May second, where they do, they have animals, they take a hike with the naturalists, they make a craft, and they have, and it's free. Lori, maybe you want to distribute this to your, to your people.
So, Debbie, this plan, we wouldn't be actually taking them, they'd be responsible for their own?
Yeah.
Um, okay, parents would be responsible for delivering them and signing up all the paperwork and everything, right? We would just be subsidizing them, real easy, we don't have to be there.
Nope.
It's a way of partnering to actually offer a recreational opportunity without having to have staff.
I didn't include Tucker, did they, because I think they just do the younger kids, don't they?
I think so, too, I don't think they have any middle schoolers.
I can check with everyone, which now, but...
Right, okay. Alright.
Alright, so should we take it to a vote? We've had a, a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So, that passes.
So, we're gonna offer for ten spots and five spots?
Yeah.
And if there are more, that's just, it's gonna be a lottery, or what? How do we do that?
No, we're just authorizing the money for ten and first line.
First, first, come first.
First come, first served.
I mean, just the fact that they have to have transportation is gonna limit some.
I think we should probably limit to one child per family.
Um, how are we gonna do that? How, mechanically, how's this gonna work?
We'll just tell them, we'll advertise it, and they'll call and register, and then Inside the Outdoors will just tell us when they have the ten kids registered.
Oh.
It's easy.
And then we just cut checks to each family?
Right. No, we cut checks to Inside the Outdoors.
Oh, Inside the Outdoors, okay, okay, that's what makes you make sure that they're okay.
And they will be verifying if they're...
Two checks.
I talked to them.
Okay. Okay, yeah, they're good, then you'll let me know how to get the check.
You know, and then another thing, limiting it to, you know, I saw some faces saying, limiting it to one child per family, you know, it's really not that bad of an idea, because you're gonna have, it's more or less a two-for-one. You know, if you've got two in that age group, and someone's being subsidized, then you only have to pay for them one, that's a lot cheaper than paying for two.
The real thing perhaps.
But some families might not even be able to afford to send a second child, I don't know.
Well, we don't have to say that.
Well, these kids are at the age where they could get a little job on the side.
Okay, well, we'll see how it goes, and if it doesn't get fully subscribed, maybe...
Steve needed some labor.
Maybe offer two additional family members.
I would like to do something where low-income kids, we could pay the whole thing, but management of that, we're just not set up to verify need and do all of that stuff right now. This isn't easy way to do it.
Yeah, this is a good way to get the foot, you know, feet wet. You have to move people.
Well, awesome, they'll tell their friends, and then they'll have...
What?
If, if some one kid's going and he's getting subsidized, he's gonna want his buddy to go, whether they're subsidized or not, so...
They just all have to fall at the same time.
Alright, so, I, moving to the, I think this is the last action item, and that is the legal requirements for a tuition increase, um, which we approved at our last meeting. Uh, but, um, uh, I think Bob brought up the fact that you need to have a publication, and then I talked to Betsy Martin about it, and got some forms from Bob, and everything we do is regulated, everything, and this is one of them. And to do a tuition increase, uh, we need to have it be legal, we need to put in a legal publication and a proper newspaper of general circulation, whatever those requirements are, saying at least ten days before the meeting that we're going to have a meeting to consider this, and then we have to present it in the form of a resolution, as opposed to an action just to approve your schedule.
Oh my God.
So, we, luckily, there is a lawyer on the group, and I know how to draft whereas clauses. Whereas, we want to charge additional amounts for tuition in the fall, and whereas, we need to have a meeting to do that, and whereas, we've decided to do that, let's do it. It'd be a little better than that, but that's all. You gotta have three resol, whereas clauses.
How soon could it happen?
Well, we have to, we will have to, um, this is for the fall, and it's March, so we're not gonna panic yet.
Yeah, I mean, families are registering, and I'm letting them all know, there's gonna be an increase. I can't really say what it's gonna be, but there will be one.
Right, and here's the deal, in the next two months, we need to, we should get the legal publication with the proper ad in the paper at least ten days before the board meeting to let the people know, and then we'll have the matter as a proper action item, so we don't have a situation where somebody says, you guys, uh, didn't advertise it, and therefore, I'm not going to pay the tuition increase.
Okay.
And you know about that?
Right.
What about advertising work?
Alright, so...
Where you did advertise, but then they didn't read it?
Okay.
You were just talking about it.
Post up the parents, they don't read it.
Oh, yeah, you could post it in their face, put it on their sign-in-and-out sheet, and they still won't see it.
Technically, you're still gonna run into people who go ahead and...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, anyway, uh, we will do that, because that is the law, and, uh, uh, we just jumped through the hoods.
Is that because the Children's Center is under the SMRPD?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because I've worked at Children's Centers, you know, all, no childcare center I've ever worked at before has had it ever...
No.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not even gonna say that that's correct, all I know is Bob brought it to our attention, and Betsy confirmed that we have to do it.
Yeah.
Does every tuition increase have to be done that way? I don't know. And my guess is you could do it a hundred times, uh, in a row without anybody raising the question of, well, I, I read the general, uh, legal notices in our local paper, and I don't remember ever seeing that, so, that's just... So, that's just a heads up, we're gonna have to redo that one.
Okay.
Okay? So, that's all the items that are on the agenda, I think.
I have one more item, how can we add an item, John, if it hasn't been on the agenda? I want to add this invoice, please, I don't want to leave it alone.
Well, it needs to be on the agenda, what's the invoice for? Unless you want a special meeting, what's the invoice for?
Website and Chili Cook-Off publicity.
Oh, this is for work that's already been done?
Yeah.
Well, is any of the work already been approved by the board?
Yeah, we already approved it.
Because we don't have to approve paying a bill on something we already approved that you could do.
Yeah, we already approved to get it done.
And we already approved the ad and the flyer. Alright, so, Phil can just pay it.
We can just pay this.
Right, we need to try to start just approving things once.
Right.
So, that's all the board's action items, if there are public comments, now's the time that those can be made. Lisa, you have a public comment?
I just wanted to present the check, the thousand dollars that we, um, had said that Linda and I, we were gonna donate to the school for five hundred for the February fundraiser in March.
Oh, great.
So, I wanted to give that to...
Well, thank you.
Yeah, great, thanks, thank you.
Much needed, much needed.
And then I just wanted to ask a question, too, because when we were fundraising before, and we had put in one of the flyers that the school was a not-for-profit, and that was a big sticky point with Kevin and the board for us advertising that way, and we were told to take it out of our fundraising information. And then I just read the, the Chili Cook-Off fundraising letter, and that phrase is, is back in there, so I'm just wondering...
Alright.
It's been, it's been, uh, Francesca made me aware of it, it was from an old letter, and it got taken out, but there might be some still floating.
Yeah.
It's been saying not-for-profit, they don't say nonprofit.
Well, it said not-for-profit as well, and it was taken out, I mean, I was, it was a huge sticking point with the Oversight Committee, and I mean, so much, I mean, many emails went back and forth that I wasn't allowed to advertise the school as that. And I had sent in copies of other documents that were worded that way, and I was told I was not allowed to have it in any of my fundraising documents.
Okay, well, I don't...
And I finessed that also.
Yeah, I don't think that our school is a nonprofit or a not-for-profit, it's part of, uh, a government agency, which is, I think, a different category, but we did hear from our auditor that the donations are tax-deductible, uh, which is, I think, the point we want to make.
Absolutely.
Wasn't, um, Bob Johnson clear on that?
Yes.
So, we can say that, but I think it, I don't think it's accurate to say that we have a nonprofit.
Right.
Or even not-for-profit.
Or a not-for-profit, um...
That's normally, that phrase is normally associated with five, one, C, three.
Yeah, that's old verbiage and still in the...
So, in the interest of trying to be careful to be accurate, I think that's a good term to avoid.
Well, I, I agree, I just...
But I was saying, you know, a tax-deductible donation...
I think that's great, no, I just, I mean, it just seemed that it was interesting that it was allowed to go out and...
She said that they're correcting it.
That was the first draft of the, of the design.
Is there a difference between checks made to the SMRPD and to the SCC?
No.
They're just considered...
SCC, you know...
Because they have the same tax ID number.
Same tax ID number.
Same tax ID number for both. So, it doesn't matter?
Okay.
They're both tax-deducted currently.
Uh, Dave, Dave. Alright, hey, Dave.
Rick?
Um, I recently completed some work for the St. Michael's Abbey. Part of my contract was to make available some material from their last remaining turkey coop and their honey house and their honey barn. I did not do the, the house that was all the way up there, that was too much asbestos, so a abatement contractor took that away. But part of the contract was written with the, I worked directly for the Abbey, not for, not for Mac Construction, was to make it available to, to, uh, community groups, ICL, SMRPD, if they want some of that old barn wood, if you guys want it to display in here, if you want something. They just wanted to make sure that, that was available before we got rid of it, so it's a, they wanted to make sure a percentage of the, the stuff was donated back to the community organization. If you guys are interested, you can meet me at the yard, I can show you what I have, there's the old tin roofing, there's the old turkey coop stuff, and stuff that I have stored at my yard.
I'll come take a look at it.
Well...
Okay.
For the community, not for Kevin's yard.
Silverado Country Fair?
My house is in the community.
Always constructing new stuff?
If you want to use some of that, you know, old, old ranch stuff and use it as that, yeah, that's different.
Well...
The guy told Brett about it actually already, so if you guys...
Okay, okay, so Lori...
Well, he didn't say anything, he just said, okay, because he probably said Shay'll put me to work on it, and he'll be like, okay. So, if you, if any, if you, if you guys want it for display here, something, just get with me, 'cause I'm not gonna store it forever.
Let me ask you a question about it, we talked a couple of months ago, and I think it's probably still in, an idea that's in play of building storage behind the handball, uh, concrete walls to store some of the country fair stuff. Is this material, is any of it, would be good for storage shelves?
Very little of it is, very little of it's good, like, structure, so it's a lot of just, we kept a lot of, like, the slat, the siding, the, and a lot of it was old and brittle, it's, it's more or less for decoration, like, for the fair, or, you know, people can make signs out of it, you were talking about signs for the Chili Cook-Off, and, you know, it's old barn wood type stuff that you can paint signs on, that type of thing. I talked to Mel, who does the miniatures, Mel Dogg, she, and I told her she could have some of it, 'cause she'd take very little, and she was actually gonna make some miniatures of, and obviously, she's, you know, profit, she'd sell them, or something at the country fair, but she's gonna make little miniatures of the old ranch type of thing, or whatever, so, it's available if the board wants to get ahold of me, and, uh, you know...
Okay, great, thanks for bringing that up. Well, it's nine thirty, ordinarily, we would have to make a motion to continue the meeting, and I don't think we should. Why don't we end at nine thirty tonight, it'll be the earliest this board has been to do it. Thank you so much for coming.